The Williamson County School Board to order. As it is necessary to protect public health, safety and welfare, Williamson County Schools is officially meeting electronically in light of the coronavirus and pursuant to executive orders number 16 and number 71, signed by Governor Bill Lee and waiver of Williamson County School Board Policy 1.400. At this time, board members, will you please record your attendance via a roll call? Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham.
Angela Durham, present.
Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, present.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, present.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, present.
Jenna Priya.
Jenna Priya, present.
Jay Galbert.
Present.
Sheila Cleveland, present.
Thank you. Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, present.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, present.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, present.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, present.
You have 12 members present tonight.
Thank you. At this time, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, Thank you. We'll now proceed to items of particular public interest, and this is the public comment portion of our agenda. We do have seven speakers tonight. Mr. Casey Hall, who is our Board Vice Chair, does monitor the timing. So, Mr. Hall, if you'll raise your hand, please. He will give you, oh, every speaker has up to three minutes, and he'll give you a 30-second warning at 2:30. Speakers, if you'll please state your name and your address. Your time will start after you have stated your name and address. And our first speaker tonight is Rebecca Martin. Don't. I don't believe I, I'm not seeing that person in the Zoom. Ms. Glenn, do you know if that person is here?
I have not seen her sign on, Madam Chair. The last I heard from her email this afternoon, she was attending.
Okay, all right. Let me move to the next speaker then. Excuse me if I mispronounce your name. Tizgil Hi.
Hi, this is Tizgil Hi.
Tizgil. Tizgil, if you will, please state your address and then go ahead. Sorry about that.
No problem. I live at 1577 Red Oak Lane in Brentwood, Tennessee. Superintendent Golden, Jay Galbraith, my board representative, and the full Williamson County School Board. I have two students, one, two students in elementary and one student Brentwood Middle. I'm really disappointed. I was positive that the national news headlines about a Sunset Middle School teacher giving her students an assignment that required them to act as slave owners and to assign jobs to their slaves, that this body and the leadership would move to action. I was certain of it. If not because of the issue that this raised about tolerance for racism and racist acts in our school system, then perhaps some of the shame that would have been felt because this is how our school system would be represented in national discussion. I was really wrong, and I'm really sad to say that I was. That incident occurred nearly two years ago in February of 2019. That incident was one of similar incidents that were reported to school and district leaders, and instead of acting to protect those children impacted, the district has really chosen to protect those behaviors of administrators and teachers that act outside of what the district expects from them. The education philosophy of Williamson County Schools is we believe education is best achieved when students involved, become involved in experiences meaningful to their lives. We believe that the educational process should develop a feeling of self-worth and accomplishment. That's taken directly from directives of the school board. The inaction of this body and ignoring parent and student outcry over acts like this is just plain wrong. My children will not attend school tomorrow because I'm concerned that hate speech, racial slurs, and other violent acts may be used against them in an environment where teachers and staff are really ill-equipped to quickly and decisively stop and implement appropriate corrective action. I think the vast majority of our teachers are so, they mean well, but they don't understand and have the tools and have the support to be able to act appropriately in these situations. I have spent... Sorry, I think I may have been disconnected. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah. 30 seconds, ma'am.
We can still hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes. And you have about 30 seconds, I believe.
I feel like I've gotten disconnected, so I can't hear anyone. But I will, I will continue. I have spent countless hours participating as a parent, engaging with the district to try to help these issues. And right now, the result is that I'm a tired parent. I ask that you immediately focus attention and resources to these issues. The district must engage the right resources. If you're serious about creating safe environments and equitable places for all students in the district, as a parent, we are willing to inform, support, and collaborate, but you are responsible for creating these safe spaces and learning environments for our children. It's time to stop stalling and talking, and it's time for us to take action. So, thank you. That ends my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Hi. Our next speaker is Kate Keese.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. Hello, everyone. My name's Kate Keese. I live at 614 Shenandoah Drive in Brentwood. I have children at Brentwood Middle and Brentwood High. First of all, I want to thank the Williamson County School Administration Board and staff for all that you have done to keep our children safe and provide the best services possible for our students during the challenges of the last 11 months. I'm here today to ask you to form a Parent Advisory Committee for Diversification and Inclusion before the next meeting of this board, preferably this week. I understand you're considering hiring a firm to assist with matters of diversity and inclusion, which I also firmly support. The Parent Advisory Council should be part of the decision-making process regarding the hiring of a DNI professional or firm. Racism is so steeped in our culture, many of us are blind to its presence or effects. We cannot address what we do not acknowledge. We must see it to heal it. Racism is not just about using derogatory language. Racism is about failing to see the humanity of a people. The wounds of racism do not belong only to people of color. All of us are wounded by denying the humanity of any. We cannot ignore the existence of racism, and we cannot consider ourselves to have educated our children if we have not begun to speak this truth with them. A Parent Advisory Committee will help guide us on the journey to see in plain sight that to which we may have been blind. Let that committee help guide us to find the best way forward. Mr. Golden, please recognize the need to address these issues as a critical component of educating our children. Create a Parent Advisory Council this week, if possible, but before the next board meeting, absolutely. Let them help guide the choices that need to be made to support these efforts going forward. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to share my thoughts, and thank you again for all you do for our kids.
Thank you, Ms. Keese. Our next speaker is Kate Cotton.
Hi, I'm Kate Cotton. I am a community member. I live at 440 Essex Park Circle. I am a parent of two children in third grade and second grade, and I'm also a teacher in Williamson County. I'm going to speak to the need for increased cultural competency work by relating a story about something that happened about 15 years ago at a different school than where I teach now. There was an incident at that school that was racial, and many at the school were upset by it. There was a lot of tension at the school. Due to student privacy, even I, as a teacher, didn't know many details. But I was aware that it had created a lot of strong feelings among the student population. The student who had done the incident was suspended for one or two weeks, and I do kind of forget that exactly. But since I didn't know who the student was, I was unaware that they were in my first-period science class until the Friday before their return on a Monday. I also had two Black students in that same class, and one of them asked to talk to our class on Monday. I stayed calm and believed that I had enough experience as an experienced teacher in tricky situations to be able to handle this situation. But when I got in the room, I realized I was actually completely unprepared. The class was very tense, and I announced that we would talk about what happened for just a few minutes before class. At that point, one of the Black students stood up, looked at the student who had been suspended, and said, "I love you, and nothing you can do can change that because I choose to love you." I don't know if I got that quote exactly right, but it's definitely very close. The comment that that student made, this junior in high school, set the tone for the rest of the class, and we were able to get back to work. But in retrospect, I realized that I was really just, I was not prepared to manage the tension that had built up around the issue. And my one mature and brave Black student had made my job a lot easier that day, really kind of saved me. And so, I would like you all to consider that even if a racial incident is addressed appropriately on the administrative level, there are often a lot of feelings that do linger after and can still cause pain and tension in the school. And so, I would like to have personally a better set of skills in place should I be the teacher handling any racial incident that might occur in the future.
30 seconds, ma'am.
Okay, and extemporaneously, I'd like to say, this is a big problem. It's a bigger problem than Williamson County. If somebody had like a perfect solution, we probably would have implemented it right now. But I do think that, you know, we can be a leader in this, and if we can create these committees and put this effort in, it will pay dividends in a lot of ways.
Thank you, Ms. Cotton. Our next speaker is Robert Lewis.
Everyone, my name's Robert Lewis. I live at 1119 Warrior Drive in Franklin, just north of Berry Farms Development in Mr. Cash's district. This is actually my first school board meeting, so thank you all for welcoming me and having me. I had the opportunity to meet Casey when we lived in Sullivan Farms, and he was running originally, so appreciate you all creating this space for us. So, I'm a small business owner and a parent of three young boys. My wife is a lifelong Franklin resident and Williamson County Schools product. She graduated from Centennial High School. I grew up in Rutherford County, but even before my family moved to Franklin, before I moved to Franklin 10 years ago, you know, I knew the strength of Williamson County Schools. They're the best in the state. Everybody knew that. You know, if you had a gifted or high-achieving child, you wanted them in Williamson County because you knew they were going to get the most rigorous education available to prepare them for incredible opportunities. If you had a special-needs child, you wanted them in Williamson County as well, to be blessed by the amazing resources and educators available to ensure that your child received the best possible education a public school system could provide. And really, anyone in Williamson County counted themselves extremely lucky to have such a stellar program available to them in their backyard. A gift to parents. And so, I thank you for your continued service in that. I'm here tonight to wonder if Williamson County Schools cares to be a gift and resource to my sons. So, you see, my wife and I have adopted all three of our boys, and in God's providence, they are Black. So, we've got three Black boys being raised by white parents, raised in a largely white community. And in recent years, many of us have realized that the default or the standard settings in many of our institutions, but certainly including education, doesn't seem to take into account the special needs, or the specific needs, rather, of Black and Brown students and their families. So, my boys are all young. They're not yet in school in the Williamson County School System, though we hope they will be soon as they continue to grow. And I hope and pray that Williamson County Schools will once again rise to the challenge to provide an exceptional experience for our Black and Brown children, just as we have with so many other white, other children, that Williamson County has an opportunity to again be a leader in the state, to set a standard for how to engage these hard and challenging topics. I'm sympathetic, and I feel that more than likely, you feel like no matter what you do is going to be criticized, no matter what you do is going to be critiqued, and some people are going to be disappointed in it. But to say that Williamson County has an opportunity to once again lead the state and maybe even in the region in how to engage in these hard issues. So, I'm here to speak tonight in favor, like many of the other constituents, for the formation of a Diversity and Inclusion Parent Advisory Committee. I understand there's already a model in place for other parent advisory committees that could be followed and replicated, that this committee, once it's been formed, would then be invited to speak into and advise on the selection of any consulting services used for Williamson County Schools, and to ask you as our representatives to provide us a timeline for this, that these efforts are going to be followed up, that they're going to be treated with high priority, and please include these in a monthly report back to the board and the community. Once again, I thank you for your service, for the opportunity to meet with you tonight, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Our next speaker is Nikki Adalini.
Hi, I'm Nikki Adalini. I live at 6848 Pull Tight Hill Road in College Grove. I have young children that will attend Page Middle and High School in the future. And like many of the other constituents, I'd like to discuss diversity and racial equality in the Williamson County Schools. I have requested to make a public comment this evening because after joining and becoming actively involved in a social justice organization here in Williamson County and also collaborating with other like-minded people and organizations, it has come to my attention that racial equality and our equity in our schools is a major concern. I love being a part of Williamson County in this great community and want to help our community even better by promoting equality for all citizens and all of our students. I ask you, Mr. Golden, and all school board members to swiftly take these specific actionable steps to further the safety of all students and especially children of color. And like Mr. Lewis and many others have already mentioned, one, I'd like to request the form of a Diversity and Inclusion Parent Advisory Committee immediately be created specifically, or if possible, this week, just as one has already been created for support services, gifted education, and parent leadership. From my understanding, the community has been very vocal about the urgent need to create a safe environment for the students of color. Establishing a Parent Advisory Committee can easily be done with parent volunteers and will move us towards creating a safe and equal environment for children of color. Number two, allow this Diversity and Inclusion Parent Advisory Committee to be a resource and assist the school board in guiding the selection of any diversity-inclusion consulting services or direct hires that are being considered by Williamson County Schools. And also, three, provide a timeline for both of the requested actions, including a monthly progress report to the board and community. I'd like to know that parents in the Williamson County's people are being heard and what is being done about our concerns. Once the above items are in place, the Parent Advisory Committee and Diversity Educational Leader on staff will be able to take action in matters such as policy, disciplinary, and curriculum issues within the school system. Thank you for your time, consideration, on all the hard work you are all, that you all do.
Thank you, Ms. Adalini. And our final speaker tonight is Randy Malden.
Good evening, Williamson County School Board members. My name's Randy Malden, out of the 2241 Oak Branch Circle in Franklin, Tennessee. On behalf of Train and on behalf of a parent and a resident of Williamson County, I'd like to thank you for your leadership. You've done a tremendous job, and just you're a model that a lot of other school systems ask me about. I get a lot of questions about what Williamson County Schools is doing. In 2018, Train was selected by Williamson County Schools as your energy services provider. And since then, we've been working with your operations staff. Mark Samuels was instrumental in working with us in the beginning. Now, we're working with Adam Christopher. We're working with Phil Devine on your staff, Tracy England, and also your energy manager, Darrell Jones, for the energy savings program and the facilities improvements that we're installing in your school, in the school systems using the energy savings dollars. We're continuing to improve the energy conservation for the schools and improving the classroom learning environment and ventilation of your school buildings. As part of our partnership that we do, Train is a publicly traded company. We also work with public buildings as well, public facilities and governments, government agencies as well, and public schools. Part of this allows us to qualify for United States Federal Government 179D tax rebate. What we do at Train to help our school systems out is we share this rebate that we apply for on behalf of schools. We share this with our public school system. Tonight, I'm honored to present to Williamson County Schools a check in the amount of $122,548.72 as your portion of this. So, once again, I'd like to thank you for your partnership with Train, and we look forward to hopefully having a few more good news events like this. It's always great for a vendor to bring a check to the schools for a change, isn't it?
Thank you, Mr. Malden. That's the first large check I've seen in the Zoom meeting ever, so interesting experience. I believe that concludes our public comment for tonight. Thank you all for participating.
If I might, point of order, the individual who was first in the list that we seem to lose in the connection, did they reconnect?
I do not see them, Mr. Mitchell. I've been looking for them. Tim or Brian? Could you tell me if that first speaker ever?
No way.
No, they didn't.
Okay. Thank you for checking, Mr. Mitchell. All right, moving on. The next item on the agenda is approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Cash, seconds. Is there any discussion? If not, then let's move to a roll call vote, please. Ms. Glenn?
Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya.
Priya, yes.
Jay Galbert.
I did it.
Jay Galbert, yes.
I did it.
Sheila Cleveland.
Hang on.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Yes.
Wimberly.
I think they heard me.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
And Madam Chair, Angela Durham. Did we, did we lose Ms. Durham?
She told me that she's having intermittent connectivity issues, so I believe she, she might have to log back in.
Thank you. Your vote is 11 yes, zero no.
Thank you, board. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda items. Do we have a motion to approve?
Rick Wimberly moved to approve.
Mr. Wimberly makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Sheila Cleveland, second.
Sheila Cleveland, seconds. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, let's move to a vote. Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Angela Durham. Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell.
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus.
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jenna Priya, yes.
Jay Galbert.
Jay Galbert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland.
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson.
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly.
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch.
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall.
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 11 yes, zero no.
Thank you, board. With approval of that consent agenda, you've approved the following items: Approval of the December 17, 2020 special called School Board Meeting Minutes and the annual review of board policies, which is an annual agenda item. Next, we move to Communications to the Board, and we'll move to Superintendent Golden's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden, Superintendent, and thank you for the reminder that we should each state our name, since we are in Zoom, so everyone's aware. I want to tell you, I'm so proud of our community, and I really want to thank those who spoke at public comment. Randy Malden, someone we've worked with a long time, and we have an agreement with Train where we've done some energy-saving things in our buildings with a guarantee savings, and so, we do want to appreciate that. But I really do want to speak to the five or six individuals who've spoken public comment about issues related to diversity and race in our community. And those of you who've been on the board, you know that we've been making it a point to speak to that every month at our work sessions, especially this year. And I want to spend a little bit of time just going back, doing a review of where we are and where we want to be. Do you all know that we've been spending some time with so many of our stakeholders getting feedback? I think back to the time when I first was going through the process of you're making a decision on me being superintendent and listening to our community members. I spoke to parents, and even before then, I participated in regular meetings that we had with our community. I extended those into the time I was superintendent. Sometimes those were called the Cultural Competency Council, the Cultural Competency Committee. There have been a lot of names, but really, the purpose of that, especially in the short time I've been superintendent, was to get some feedback from our parents and our families about race, color, religion-related topics, share with them where we are, and then get feedback from them. Many of you participated in those meetings. And the format we typically structured was us presenting, and then we would break up into small groups and hear from parents. I've also spent a lot of time talking with teachers. I've spent a lot of time talking with students and listening to them over these issues, and I've gotten a lot of feedback over time. And you know that after receiving this feedback, we set some focus points for this year. Number one, we set some short-term focus points, and that really centered around making sure that our staff and our faculty reported any allegations or any incidents of inappropriate behavior based on race, color, religion, or any protected class. And I started that just right after school out last year, letting teachers know that that was going to be a focus point of ours this year. And we've been able to refine that, that thought, in part because of what we've heard from our alumni and from our current students. You may recall that there was a lot of information that we found posted on the internet and various social media sites with many, many examples of inappropriate behavior from students and sometimes staff members over time and students' takes on those. We reviewed all that information, and we found that while some of those incidents were reported and were investigated through our Human Resources Department or at the school level and were addressed, many of those were left unreported. And that was another example for us of, of those indicators that there may be, may be many students in many situations who just aren't comfortable and haven't been comfortable reporting those incidents. So we included in our focus this year, growing our culture so that students would be more comfortable reporting those incidents, knowing that there would be a, an appropriate response from school administration. But on top of that, another focus point we had, after all that work that we heard from, from our stakeholders, was that if we are going to grow our competence, that if we are going to, to grow how we serve our diverse student body and our teachers, we really needed professional help. Over the years, we've seen many examples of, of us, of us taking steps in response or in reaction to particular events. But we needed a comprehensive plan that's going to take some work to put together if we are going to create a sustainable change in, in how we approach these issues that our, that our families have raised. And you know all this because we've been talking about it for a number of months. We're still working on that second prong of, of what I discussed. And, and you all know that you've gone through some vetting with, with some of those professional groups already, and we're continuing to that, continuing to do that. If we are going to make a sustainable change, I've become convinced, based on all our stakeholder feedback, that we need something that helps us do that with some professional skilled help. I appreciate those, the, the comments that especially our teacher made about, about that need. We've done some professional development here and there over the years. But again, we haven't had a comprehensive continued plan. So I want you all to know that, that, that short-term, we've been focusing on, 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 on raising that student awareness. And I've been doing it personally. Many of our administrators have been doing it and having those conversations with students, but we've got to do more. And the more is, is getting that help. I will be coming to you very soon. We anticipate within the next month or at the, at the outside two with a, with a proposal from a company, just as we did a few months ago, so that we can grow in that. And I want to emphasize to you as, as, as our Board that this focus is not just one thing. It is on making sure our students are being served appropriately, and it's going to take all of us together. It's going to take the Board buying in, and it's going to take our teachers, and it's going to take some, some, some generalized training, but some more specific as well. And it has the potential to be pretty comprehensive if it's going to be long-term as we take these steps. I've heard a lot of comments about committees. There may be some time for a particular committee. I will tell you, as I sit here right now, after hearing from so many of our stakeholders, the idea of appointing just a few and turning down others is a real concern of mine. That if we're going to do this right, we need some professionals who've got experience in growing our communities to do this. And I think, based on, again, what we've talked about, that's the most appropriate step rather than responding or reacting to a particular request and, and having something that might make a, a little flash, but not help us sustain growth. So that's going to be a concentration point of ours. That we want to hear from all our families. We want to hear from all our students as, as we go through this process. I think we're, the time is right for this. It's, 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 it's on our mind. When I hear from alumni that there were times in their, in their high school, middle school, and even occasionally elementary school career where they were bothered by something that was said, either by a staff member or a student, that gets to my heart. And, and it's, it's something that we need to address with good coherent planning. So, like I made the commitment to you months and months ago, I was going to talk about that every time. I've typically concluded our discussions with, with a reference to what we're working on. But this time, I felt like it was important for us to hit that first because of the quality of, of our community members sharing that. So I do encourage them to, 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 to keep involved as we go through that process. Next item I wanted to mention to you briefly is COVID. It seems like every time we have a meeting, within just a day or two, new items develop. So we had our work session Thursday night. I want to let you know that we have submitted to the state our application to be a, an administrator of, of the vaccine process for our employees. So that approval is pending at the state level, and we are working on some additional logistics related to that. The, the State Department of Health a few weeks ago announced that that was a possibility. It's pretty, it's pretty involved. It includes getting a, a medical doctor or a pharmacist to sign off to participate. I do know that we had a meeting at Independence High School, which we're hoping to be our site because of drive convenience with some of those professionals to start working on the logistics of that even before we get approval from the state to be one of those sites. One of you asked last Thursday, our, our timetable, our best guess timetable for the vaccines becoming available for us in the 1B category. And, you know, we, we hinted hard because we just, we just don't know, but we gave you some estimated dates. And if I'm not mistaken, we're, we're, we're hoping that we'll be able to start administering those vaccines in February. As soon as we hear from the state about our application, we will let you know. Also, I want to let you know, related to that, that we continue to update our website with a number of items related to the WCS community, including school-by-school data on positive cases and quarantines, and general data that's broken out by staff members and students. That is on our COVID webpage, and it's at the very top. So we, we entered some new data this week, just today, so I would, I encourage you to track that. There are so many data points that, that we look at. And we've made it a point, and you all know this also, I think it's important for our community to continue to hear this, that it is about us evaluating whether we can safely be on campus. And that's been a goal throughout, and we're going to continue with that as a goal. Next thing I wanted to mention to you, and another example of things change almost on a daily basis. The Governor's program to have a special, a special session to address education has started. Some of the legislation was filed before, just a few hours before our Thursday boardwork session. On Friday, there was a funding bill that was filed. That funding bill includes a total proposed amount of $43 million statewide for teacher pay increases. That is specified in the bill as being non-recurring. And it specifies the dates for January 1st through June 30th. We don't know exactly what that means for us right now, but we're working on that. But it's very clear to me that the legislature, and especially the Governor, because this is being submitted through the Governor's proposal, is to give teachers a pay raise. You may recall that I mentioned to you on Thursday that I anticipated that it would not include some of our classified employees in this, in this funding element. As it's written and as it's proposed, that is accurate. It is not included. But I'm telling you, as, as we, as we sit here at our board meeting, that once we figure out what this means for our teachers, whether it's a portion of our teachers or all, we're going to be having some discussions administratively about bringing a proposal to you that, that takes care of addressing this question with all our employees. It's going to be very hard for me to come to you with a proposal for just a portion of, of our staff. And so, so be ready for that, be waiting for that based on whatever passes at the, at the state level. Final thing I wanted to, to mention is a couple of follow-ups from Thursday night. We, we, we mentioned the quality of remote instruction, the quality of quarantine instruction. Our quarantine numbers this week are, are very low compared to what we experienced the last few months of, of last semester. But we anticipate that it will be a touch-and-go issue on a daily basis. And we know that those students who've been quarantined, some of the students who've tested positive but might be doing well enough health-wise to participate remotely have been participating remotely even while our students are on campus. And as we talked about how things have changed from the beginning of the year to now, one phrase that Dr. Oyer used that I'm going to borrow from her is teacher and student fluency has greatly improved. And what we were talking about are just some of those basics related to being in, in a virtual environment. Logging on, the use of Google Classroom, the use of Schoology, the use of Zooms. The comfort level that our students have and our teachers have with those online tools has really grown. And we haven't set up any testing to measure that, even though we, you know, typically educators really love testing. So it's a qualitative analysis that we have. But we know that every day, things get a little bit better with, with that. We've also made it a focus for students to, to get that instruction even if they're not on campus. And that's even been extended to some of our students who are just out sick for traditional issues. If they're capable of jumping on even when they're homesick, there have been examples of those students being able to do that. Largely speaking, our elementary school students have been able to sit in on Zooms. But even, even with them, related arts classes, physical education, if there's a specific test going on or a specific project, it may not be most appropriate for them to participate by Zoom. That's even more true as you get up to the upper grades. And so what we really strongly encourage our families to do is if you get quarantined, if you test positive and can't be at school but can participate, make sure you have those conversations with your teachers and your principals so that they can plan on a weekly and even a daily basis of to maximize your child's participation in school while they're out. It's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work because things change on a daily basis in a classroom. And, and often from class to class, especially at the high school level. But we've made it a point with our teachers to find ways to maximize student participation even, 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 even when you're, when you're, when you're out. I will tell you also, we sometimes hear too late from families that, oh, my child's been out. And so if you get that notice from the Health Department, we strongly encourage you to have that conversation with, with, with our administration or with your teachers so that you can get that support. I mentioned on, on Thursday night how proud I am of our teachers, especially our special education teachers. It's a lot of work, and we have stars in our schools. And, and I don't think you can, you can thank them enough. I can't thank them enough. I've actually confessed here and there. I sent Friday notes out. It almost sounds redundant, but I mean it. And I, and I hope that they understand that when I, when I specifically thank them. Final thing I want to mention is another Governor's order that you may not be aware of. Back in November, the Governor signed an order that next week is School Board Appreciation Week. And so I want to, I want to jump a little bit ahead. It is just Tuesday. And let you all know that I appreciate you, and I appreciate the work that you do. You know that I've told many of you as individuals that what you're basically doing is volunteer work for the community. And, and we very much appreciate your leadership. So with that, Ms. Garrett, I am, I'm finishing up my report, and I'm open to any questions if there are.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Are there any questions? I don't see any questions. Mr. Golden, I think we can move to the next item.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. The next item on our agenda is the district update. I always look forward to Carol Birdsong giving us student spotlights. Carol?
Thank you, Mr. Golden Board Members. This is Carol Birdsong. And with the help of Brian King and Tim McNeese, we are going to celebrate some students, teachers, and coaches this evening. We are going to start, first of all, with perfect PSAT score. These are rare, I have to say. But we do have three folks we are celebrating tonight from Brentwood High School, Eric Youngberg, from Ravenwood High School, Ria Metra, and also from Ravenwood High School, Sophia Wang. Perfect PSAT scores. Now we're going to move to the arts. And we are going to start, start with Brentwood High School, and these are all-state choir members. Vivian Hurst, Caroline Kunkel, and Ella Saliba. Their instructor is Natalie Pratt from Centennial High School. And we, we have, we have several from Centennial, so we have a couple of slides here. But this is Kyle Brukel, Graham Catterett, Sidney Hoover, and Savani Cassebo. Now, we also have David Moore, Natalie Peterson-Lopez, and Luca Silva. And finally, we have Riley Tuttle, Nicole Vanderkamp, and Nicholas Youngstead. Their instructor is Jonathan Vest from Franklin High School. Aisha Henshaw and Molly Pope. Their instructor is Angela Beal. From Independence High School, Parks Garner and Nicholas Perron. Their instructor is Justin Kirby. From Nolansville High School, Isabella Wickham. Instructor is Cassidy Lindstrom. And from Ravenwood High School, again, we have several students, so we have several screens for them. But this is Sullivan Dickerson, Mark DeBakla, Bryn Giantasso, Nathan Jessup. We also have Tricia Mansdar, Caroline Meyer, Ella Miller. And we also have Natalie Porter, Mason Reiser, Walker Reiser. And we have Aiden Schatt, Madeline Thomas, and Jasper Vassilis. And their instructor is Ethan Bennett from Summit High School. Madeline Bauer, Logan Benton, Anna Beth Elston, Maggie Harris, Ava Prodwitch, and Olivia Thomas. Their instructor is Jenna Ellsbury. And in athletics, we are finally going to celebrate Summit High School state champions in football this year. They are the T double S double A five A football champions. Their head coach is Brian Coleman, and he asked that we recognize all of the assistant coaches. So here we go. Alex Melton, Jacob Burkett, Nick Michaels, Brian Burnham, Jeff, Jeff Gark, Trey Tate, Tate Martin, Kirk Taylor, Tug McCleary, and Stephen Slowey. Congratulations to all of our students and staff.
And Madam Chair, if I may, I want to mention a couple of things. Number one, our vision statement states that WCS will provide a supportive environment where students are challenged to pursue excellence in academics, athletics, and the arts. And all three of those focus points were, were mentioned in Carol's report. And just as a quick reminder, when you hear PSAT, that is a direct precursor to national merit scholarships. So we're very encouraged by that. And with that, Madam Chair, that is our report.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. And I'll give a quick Board Chair report. This is the last time you'll hear me say this. I've been issuing this reminder over the last month. But our required, our required state filing, disclosure filing is due on January 31st. So make sure you get that in so that we're in compliance for that. As we know, our special legislative session started today, and the special session is about education. And I was listening to WCS alum and Governor Bill Lee's remarks. And he referenced what's, what's being called a learning loss. I think that, I'm not sure we would call it that learning deficit, you know, perhaps being, you know, being behind some marker. There's, there's all kinds of ways that this is being described. But he did mention that that number of being 50% behind in reading ELA and 65% in math is a national number. He, he did credit it to national sources. So I just want to remind the Board that I just want to remind the board that our community has a lot of concerns right now. But those numbers do not reflect our community based on the information that we have today about that figure being around the 10% mark. And then we also have some data that the district is pulling together about this last semester and exams for older students, too. So just a reminder that that information is out there and there might be a lot of heightened concern. But we are continuing to pull our own data and it does not look like that we are in that realm. That does cover a lot of schools that have not, you know, have not been back to school very much at all so far. That also covers schools that don't have, school districts that don't have connectivity, some that still don't have their computers and things like that. So I was glad today that it was mentioned in his remarks that that was national data that he was pulling from because there had been questions about that. Speaking of the legislative session, our legislative leads are hard at work for us. Mr. Wimberly and Ms. Cleveland, I just wanted to see if you had any remarks that you wanted to make here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, though, I just happen to have my ethics letter in front of me, and the deadline is the 25th, not the 30th.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. So that concludes my report. No, actually, since we talked on Thursday, a lot has happened. But a lot is happening almost every hour that they're there. So I'm not sure that there's much to report on definitively that was different from Thursday. Still, the major issues are teacher pay, hold harmless on test scores, catch-up remediation, which kind of ties to what you were saying. Certainly, there's some funding issues. And I guess since the report on Thursday, one of the members of our delegation has introduced legislation that could adjust the way that quarantines in the schools are worked. And our staff, along with the TSBA staff, and I'm sure a lot of others, are working with Representative Ogles to make the language in that bill where it could possibly help us. So we'll have to continue watching all of these things closely. I suspect that by the time we get together again, these things will have settled. So thanks to the good work of our staff and our TSBA help, and our relationships with members of the delegation, we'll stay on top of these things.
Thank you, Mr. Wimberly. Ms. Cleveland?
Yes. Also, let's not forget that the challenge of us getting teachers to come into the county and over state borders, and we know it's difficult because of them having to start from scratch again. And so the school board is supporting a resolution to support the reciprocity of teachers coming into the state. And so that's a very important resolution that we're backing.
Thank you both. And Rick, thanks for that correction on that deadline. It is actually that filing is due the 25th rather than the end of the month.
I'm here to serve.
Thank you. And the last thing that I want to say in this report, and the most important thing, is that our teachers and employees of the year have been selected from their individual schools or departments. We have received that information from Assistant Superintendent Hall's HR group. And we now have the opportunity to thank those folks and know who they are. And so that's probably the most important thing I have to say tonight is thank you to these employees of the year and congratulations. And your efforts are certainly appreciated in this unique year. So with that, I'll conclude the board chair's report, and we'll move on to new business. The first item is 2020-2021 School Board Budget Amendments and Resolutions. And the first one is the General Purpose School Fund Amendment 1.2.1 CARES reimbursement. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This first item is reimbursement through the CARES Act for expenses due to the effect of COVID, more specifically, technology, connectivity, remote learning. And it's placing these received funds into the fund balance based on our previous expenses. Recommend approval.
Do you have a staff recommendation or approval? Is there a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell recommends to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Dan Cash.
Mr. Cash makes the second. Is there any discussion? I see no hands raised. If not, we'll move to a vote. Ms. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham. Dan Cash.
Dan Cash, yes.
Ms. Durham, are you on?
Yeah.
Ms. Glenn? I think that was a yes.
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jennifer Priya, yes.
Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Board. The next item is Education Capital Projects Fund Amendment 1.2.1 Capital Interest. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The State Comptroller's Office has asked that we include a budget item for projected interest income from our capital funds. And this resolution achieves that request. So recommend approval.
We do have a recommendation for approval. Is there a motion to approve?
Rick Wimberly moved to approve.
Rick Wimberly makes the motion. Is there a second?
Sheila Cleveland, second.
Sheila Cleveland, seconds. Is there any discussion? I see no hands raised. We can move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Jennifer Priya, yes.
Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution 2.2.1 Special Education Assistant from Federal. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden. We are asking to move 15 special education positions from the federal side to the state side because of insufficient federal funds. But the state has provided us with additional IDEA funds for what they call high cost. And so we are funding it with that. We recommend approval.
Have a staff recommendation of approval. Is there a motion?
Priya, I move to approve.
Ms. Priya makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Emerson makes the second. Is there any discussion? I see no hands raised. Then let's move to a vote, please.
Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Jennifer Priya, yes.
Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is General Purpose School Fund Resolution 2.2.1 Buses. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden. This is the time of year where we ask you to fund replacement and growth buses. And we had a pretty detailed discussion back at the work session. Our buses can last from 15 to 18 years, plus they have a mileage requirement on them. So the majority of our buses in this request are actually replacement buses. We have 19 replacement gen ed and four growth buses for new regions of the county that are going to have new neighborhoods, and four replacement special education buses and one growth special education bus. We recommend approval.
Anyone? Is there a motion?
Andy moves to approve or make the motion that we accepted.
Ms. Emerson makes the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Elliot Mitchell, seconds.
Elliot Mitchell, seconds. Is there any discussion? I see no discussion. We can move to a vote, please.
Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Thank you. Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is the General Purpose School Fund Resolution 2.2.1 in our category. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Student Support Services Department has estimated that there is a need to increase in budgeted for contracted services for legal fees. And this $200,000 request reflects that. And I recommend approval.
We give a staff recommendation for approval. Would anyone like to make the motion?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Elliot Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Jennifer Priya, seconds. Is there any discussion? No discussion. We can move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of open and/or closed zone schools for the 2021-2022 year. And this is an annual agenda item. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden. I want to let you know that based on the discussion we had at the work session, Mr. Mitchell specifically asked a question about rezoning we had done about a year and a half ago, and asked that we consider adding one item. And we have added the item of including Spring Station Middle School up to 25 total students from Heritage Middle or Thompson Station Middle in the geographic area previously rezoned from Spring Station Middle back in 2019. So I want to thank Mr. Mitchell for that suggestion. With that addition, we do recommend approval.
Have staff recommendation? Does anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Sheila Cleveland, second.
Sheila Cleveland, seconds. Is there any discussion? No discussion on an open zoning recommendation? It's pretty unique.
You're welcome to offer comments yourself, Madam Chair.
I have one. Thank you, though. I think we can move to a vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya? Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. The next item is the approval of the Charter School Review Committee 2020-2021. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden. As you know from our discussion at the work session, Ms. Osbrooks has prepared a proposed committee as required by Tennessee law to review charter school applications. And we are structuring it for it to be an annual approval based on the possibility of us receiving requests. And so based on this year, we are recommending this group. Recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. Do we have a motion to approve?
Priya, I move to approve.
Ms. Priya makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Rick Wimberly, second.
Mr. Wimberly, seconds. Do we have any discussion? I see none. Then we can move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya? Jake Albert?
Jake Albert, yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Excuse me. Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. And next up, we have some board policies for first reading. The first is 1.9001 Charter School Applications. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the first of our first reading policies. And we have brought this from the Policy Committee. In this Charter School Applications is a proposed new policy that is designed to give a comprehensive explanation of the process for applying for a charter school. With that, I do recommend approval at first reading. uh, applying for a charter school. Uh, with that, I do recommend approval at first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Golden. There a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Dan Cash?
Mr. Cash makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second, Casey Hall.
Mr. Haw, seconds. Any discussion, board? I do not see any hands raised. Then we can move to a vote.
Angela, um, this is Lydia Glenn. Thank you, Madam Chair. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albert?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Glenn. Uh, next policy for first reading is 5 dot 4 0 0 Personnel Health Exams. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jason Golden. These next three policies are a breakout of one policy that, uh, that Ms. Osbrooks has put together after, um, some advice from the TSBA. 5 point 4 0 0 Person, Personnel Health Examinations Communicable Diseases is that first part, and we recommend approval.
Do we have a motion on the floor to approve?
Sheila Cleveland motions to approve.
Sheila Cleveland makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Casey Hall, second.
I think I heard Casey first. Mr. Haw, seconds? Is there any discussion? There are no hands raised. We can move to a vote, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albert?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. Our next policy for first reading is 5 dot 4 0 1 Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this, uh, content of this policy used to be in the previous policy Communicable Diseases, and it's been updated to reflect the current, uh, rules and regulations and, uh, um, and State Board of Education policy. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Brad Fiskus moved to approve.
Mr. Fiskus makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Jennifer Priya, second.
Ms. Priya, seconds. Is there any discussion? I see none. Then we can move to a vote.
Madam Chair, this is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Jennifer Priya, yes.
Jake Albert?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes.
Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Motion passes.
Thank you. And our final item on the agenda tonight is policy for first reading 5 dot 4 0 2 Hepatitis B. Mr. Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Likewise, uh, this, uh, um, used to be part of, and currently still is part of the Communicable Diseases Policy. We're, we're again requesting a breakout of this information related to hepatitis B. Hepatitis B, uh, recommend approval.
Is there a motion to approve?
Elliot Mitchell moves to approve.
Mr. Mitchell makes the motion. Is there a second?
Rick Wimberly, second.
Mr. Wimberly, seconds. Is there any discussion? See no discussion, then we can move our final vote, Ms. Glenn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is Lydia Glenn. Angela Durham?
Angela Durham, yes.
Dan Cash?
Dan Cash, yes.
Elliot Mitchell?
Elliot Mitchell, yes.
Brad Fiskus?
Brad Fiskus, yes.
Jennifer Priya?
Yes.
Jake Albert?
Yes.
Sheila Cleveland?
Sheila Cleveland, yes.
Candy Emerson?
Candy Emerson, yes.
Rick Wimberly?
Rick Wimberly, yes.
Eric Welch?
Eric Welch, yes.
Casey Hall?
Casey Hall, yes. Casey Hall, yes.
Nancy, Nancy Garrett?
Nancy Garrett, yes.
Your vote is 12 yes, 0 no. Your motion passes.
All right. Board members, thank you so much for your preparation for this meeting. And I believe this meeting is going to bring our, our average down for the year, average duration, so appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, I do see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, uh, we voted to approve open zoning, uh, tonight. Uh, can, uh, Mr. Golden remind us and everyone listening what the process is to apply for that and what the deadlines are for that, please?
That's a great question. This is a first come, first served online process. Uh, Ms. Nunley is actually here and may give some details about their posting. The official deadline is May 15th. Over time, we have brought this up earlier and earlier so that parents can have some time to prepare and so that Ms. Nunley's staff, uh, can, uh, can get that, um, that prepared as well. So Ms. Nunley, if you would, for the public, let them know about the details of the first come, first served process.
Uh, all of our out-of-zone requests are done through our online portal. The link is on the Bus Routes and School Zones page at the district website. Uh, the deadline to apply for all circumstances is May the 15th, unless related to a residential move, we are new to the district, and some program of study applications are taken after the May 15th deadline due to how they are approved in the process. Uh, the portal will be live at midnight tonight.
That's the, that, that was the, uh, the other end of the deadline I was looking for. And again, the portal is on the bus, the, the bus schedule page? Is that what you?
That's correct. That's correct. So if you go, if you, if you go to the, our main page, wcs.edu, if you run your cursor over the About Us, uh, icon in the top right, dropdown box has a number of choices. And on the top left is going to be uh, bus routes and school zones there, and you'll click on that.
Okay, thank you. Midnight tonight is when it goes live, right, Allison? Okay.
Yes, sir.
Great, great question. Thank you for that reminder.
Uh, I don't see any other hands raised. Mr. Golden, do you have any closing remarks?
Uh, just, uh, thank you again. Uh, and with, with so many things changing, please know that we're committed to what we've talked about to, tonight in my superintendent's report, uh, growing in the way we, we serve our, our diverse community, uh, and in, uh, in meeting our students' needs with instruction in this, in this environment. Um, so, uh, again, I thank you all for your leadership and, uh, I hope we continue to have a good week.
Thank you, board. Good evening. This meeting is adjourned. Good night.
Thank you.